All right. Welcome, everyone, to the June 12th School Committee meeting. We would like to thank ETV for videotaping this evening's meeting, and we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, with equal will, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd just like to introduce our school committee members. To my right, we have Mr. Tony Gelfi, Mrs. Rachel King, Ms. Lillian Holbrook. Mr. Dolan could not join us, he's on a business trip. Our superintendent, Mr. Swenson, Susan Primandowski. We have Richie Florence, Kevin Marrera, and Jason Hammond. Very good. And first up, we have the approval of minutes of May 22nd. Motion to approve by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Very good. And, Mr. Swenson, any correspondence tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have several. So first, we'd like to first start with the NELMS Scholar Leaders. And with the permission of the committee, I'd like to invite up Mr. Tim Kaliff, who is the principal at Bridgewater Middle School. And Mrs. Charette from Rainham Middle School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our Bridgewater Middle School and Rainham Middle School level Scholar Leader winners tonight. These students were chosen by a panel of teachers and administrators from each school using the following criteria recommended by the New England League of Middle Schools: Students demonstrate academic achievement. Are positive role models for peers. Demonstrates integrity, honesty, self-discipline, and courage. Exercises influence on peers in upholding school ideals. Shows leadership in group situations. Shows respect for self and others. Exemplifies attitude and inspires positive behavior in others. Demonstrates academic initiative and is willing to uphold scholarship. Demonstrates leadership in the classroom and school activities. Is dependable and is well-organized in any responsibility undertaken. Exemplifies desirable qualities of character and integrity. These award recipients epitomize the qualities and characteristics of a NELMS Scholar Leader and are credited to their families, school, and community. Each student received a personalized plaque and was recognized along with over 160 other Scholar Leaders from the state of Massachusetts at a dinner banquet in Marlborough in May. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you from the Bridgewater Middle School, Tiffany Snexton and Brayden Hackett.
And from the Rainham Middle School, Haley Banville and Jack Warham. These Scholar Leaders are high-achieving students and are positive role models in our buildings. We are so very proud to present to you, present them to you this evening.
Congratulations. He wants a picture after.
If I could just say, congratulations to the students, also congratulations to the parents and the families for raising such incredible kids that we get to work with each and every day. These are some of the niceties that we like to do throughout the course of the year to recognize these students that come to school every day, do what they're supposed to do academically, but also socially, and they add to the culture and climate of the overall building. So, kids, I say it all the time, BR has the best kids around, and you guys exemplify that. So thank you to you for being the wonderful children that you are, but thank you to Mom and Dad and family members for all that you do in raising such wonderful children. Thanks.
I'd like to continue now with Project 31. Our Project 351, rather, celebrates the ethic of service, youth leadership, and the power of community to uplift and unite. At the heart of Project 351 is the dedication and compassion of our eighth-grade ambassadors. Middle schools throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts nominate a grade-eight student to join their youth leadership program. Youth are selected by local educators for their exemplary ethic of service and values of compassion, humility, and gratitude. On Martin Luther King Jr. Day in January, our Project 351 ambassador went to Boston to complete a service project. The RMS ambassador, Julia Mitten, made Valentine's cards and candy bags for veterans. She also made blankets to be passed out on the streets to homeless people. Since that day, Julia has completed her own service project in the Rainham community. Her Cradles to Crayons program has been widely promoted in the Rainham community. Tonight, I'd like you to meet Julia Mitten, RMS Project 351 Ambassador. I also want to point out Julia is wearing her Project 351 tee-shirt and badge that she got that day. Thank you.
And just to echo what we stated about our Scholar Leaders, also our 351 representative from Rainham Middle School, congratulations to you and for being such a wonderful ambassador, not only to RMS, but the entire district, and what you did with your volunteerism, too, I believe, probably Cradles to Crayons? Is that what you're doing? Terrific. So thank you for all that you did, and Mom and Dad, thank you for raising such a wonderful person that we get to work with each and every day. So, that's all we have for student recognition. Now, you can stick around, as I say, and get a civics lesson, or you can go watch the pre-game for the row. Your choice. All right, go Bees.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We also have, Madam Chair, this last Friday, June 7th, 2019, the La Liberty Elementary School was officially honored at the Massachusetts State House by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Commissioner, Jeffrey C. Riley, as a school of recognition. The La Liberty was only one of 53 schools out of a little more than 1,850 schools throughout the Commonwealth to have earned this achievement as a result of high student performance. Congratulations go out to all the incredibly hard-working and dedicated students, families, faculty, staff, and administrators at the La Liberty Elementary School on this outstanding accomplishment. Please know they've brought great pride and honor to our wonderful district. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Primandowski, who attended with us, Mr. Powers, and also we had two teachers that attended as well, Sandy Tassica and Shana Shabat, and the former La Liberty principal, Mr. Bray. It was a wonderful event at the State House, in the great room of the State House. We received this recognition plaque. We also received recognition from Senator Mark Pacico as well, and we're going to be framing both and placing them at the La Liberty Elementary School. And I can't, again, say enough about the folks over at that building. The climate, the culture there is truly student-centered. The things that they have done over the course of the last few years in terms of curriculum and instruction, and really the resources that they have been provided to implement them with fidelity, and using their resources, not only the written resources, but their resources themselves as educators, has made the difference in that building. And they are truly a model school for us within the district and within the Commonwealth. So I thank them very much for all of these accolades that they have absolutely earned. And thank you, Dr. Primandowski, for joining us last week as well.
Very nice ceremony. All right, oh, we still have one more recognition.
One more recognition. With that, we have a letter from the Department of Veteran Affairs in Bridgewater. And it reads, Dear Mr. Swenson, please express to the members of the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School Marching Band, Shanaya Akoulis for reading the Gettysburg Address, and Shuna Akoulis for the reading of the General Order Number 11, and Cameron Shave and Brendan Mahoney for rendering the tapes. My appreciation for their attendance and participation in the Memorial Day ceremonies honoring those that have lost their lives in service of our great nation. Our country is strong because of people such as these students and staff who took time to remember those Americans who sacrificed their lives so that we could remain free. You, your staff, and students have continuously taken the time to contribute to our community, and it is greatly appreciated. Truly yours, Roderick K. Walsh, Director of Veteran Services, Bridgewater. So, thank you, very nice, and thank you to our students and staff who participated in the Memorial Day Parade in Bridgewater. We also had a Memorial Day Parade in Rainham, so we thank all those folks from RAVE and the Memorial Day Committee for the planning of that event as well. That's all we have under recognition unless we want to take personnel out of...
Yes, we would like a motion to move the personnel report out of order. Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs. King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, so we will move up personnel. Mrs. Gormly.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Mr. Swenson. First order of business in my personnel report is the new appointment of our new Director of Facilities, Robert Pacico, effective July 1st, 2019. I'll give you a little background. Mr. Pacico comes to BR from the Metropolitan Regional Career and Technical Center in Providence, Rhode Island, where he was the Facilities Manager for four years. Prior to that, he was employed at Roger Williams University for eight years as a Facilities Operations Supervisor. Mr. Pacico has his Building Operator Certification, Level 1 and 2 through the national grid, OSHA Safety Certification, and is a Certified Crowd Manager for the state of Rhode Island. He's also the Secretary of the Rhode Island Association of School Maintenance Directors, and he speaks Portuguese. So I'd like to, I'd like to invite Bob up to say a few words.
Very excited to be here. Looking forward to jumping on with the team. So excited that my official start date is on the first. I've been up here probably a couple of days every week for the past three weeks, just to ease the transition a little bit easier there. So, as Mary stated, I have experience in K through 12 as well as higher education, and my method is one of a proactive, consistent approach, which should lead to great things. So, thank you very much, and glad to be here.
Over to God.
Yeah.
Yes.
See what bunch of self-confidence.
Yes. Welcome. But, I could just say, as far as Mr. Pacico, I think he's going to be a great asset to the team. As you know, that we've, Mr. Fox took a job elsewhere in May. After that time, we pulled Al Baranselli out of mothballs and brought him back in to the district, which is great because Al was here for 20 years and knows the district and the buildings like the back of his hand. And I appreciate Bob's efforts in coming in the last couple of Fridays, joining our management team meetings to see how that operates, getting a feel for the buildings, getting a feel for the grounds, the different crews with maintenance and custodial, and our grounds folks as well, because that's going to really help him hit the ground running in July. Because summer's a very, a couple of weeks of really important times for us to get our buildings ready for the opening of school come September. So, I do appreciate you being here, Bob, and taking the time, of your own time, to be here to help with that transition. And I do want to thank Mr. Baranselli for coming out of retirement, semi coming out of retirement. I think he's really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it. I've always been a huge Al Baranselli fan, so, and I think it's really going to behoove us as a district to have that transition time so that Mr. Pacico can come in and really start to prioritize our greatest needs, which we already know, we already know, with just a couple of heavy-hitting ones over this summer. So, thank you, Bob, for everything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In addition, a couple of other new appointments. Kathryn McLellan, Ed Support Professional at the Bridgewater Middle School, effective May 6th. Kelly Costa, another Education Support Professional at the preschool, that was effective May 28th. Joanna Burnett, new Business Technology Teacher at the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School, effective August 27th. And Molly Simmons, Speech and Language Pathologist at Mitchell Elementary School, effective August 27th. Following reassignments have occurred, and these are all effective at the start of the new school year. Malina Shidi will be Library Media Specialist at the high school. Kathryn Ferraro, returning from a leave of absence, will be assigned at Grade 7 ELA at Bridgewater Middle. Kristin Gilde, returning from a leave of absence, assigned to Grade 1 at Merrill. Marissa Bramwell, reassigned from World Cultures to Grade 7 Social Studies at Rainham Middle. Christine Cotter, reassigned from Grade 6, excuse me, Grade 6 to Grade 8 ELA at Rainham Middle School. Gillian Perry, reassigned from Grade 8 to Grade 6 ELA at RMS. Kathryn Kelleher, reassigned from Special Education at Bridgewater Middle to Williams Intermediate. Denise Fertado, reassigned from World Cultures at Williams to Social Studies at Bridgewater Middle. Victor Perez Corral, reassigned from World Cultures at Williams to Spanish at the high school. And the superintendent has also accepted the following resignations for the purpose of retirement. Marie Fahey, Nurse Leader, effective June 30th, 2020, after 33 years of service. And David Audette, Computer Technology Teacher, effective June 30th, 2020, after 11 years of service. And this concludes my report.
All right, so we will move back up to our educational reports, Curriculum and Programatic Changes Report. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. I did want to just bring you up to speed on a few curriculum and programming changes for the 1920s school year. If you recall, earlier in the school year, I did a brief presentation on our Unified Arts offering across the district, and pointed out one of the challenges that we were having at the middle school level was that the unified offerings were not consistent and equitable across the district. With just collective heads in a room, Mr. Swenson and I sat down with our middle school principals, and we talked, could we first internally make things more equitable, and to other any different programmings that we could possibly offer? And pleased to say that we were able to, for the most part, unify our Unified Arts offerings across the district with small exceptions, and I'll point those out to you. So currently, right now, at the middle school, and when I say middle school, I'll kind of talk in that five to eight range, all of our fifth through eighth graders will have PE as they currently do. For the most part, they will all have art, with the exception of Bridgewater Middle School, Grade 7. For music, it'll be Grades 5 and 6 at RMS, and Grade 7 at BMS, and 5 and 6 at Williams. And computers, again, we're kind of moving around the grades that we're going to be offering computers, so it'll be Grades 5 and 7, both on the Bridgewater side and on the Rainham side. And new for next year, we have decided to move away from the World Cultures program, as Ms. Gormly just told you, some of those teachers are reassigned. We felt as though that we were better served by bringing in a health education program at our middle school level. As you know, we've presented numerous times on our challenges that our young folks are having in terms of social-emotional issues, dealing with anxiety, depression, and then just some social challenges, peer challenges, and obviously substance abuse. We're seeing it down at the earlier levels, more so than ever before. So we felt, instead of being always reactive, it was time to be proactive, and we felt as though implementing a health education program at the middle school level, Grade 6 and 8, for next year would be more beneficial than having a World Cultures program. That's not to say that we didn't find the benefits of having a World Cultures program, certainly, you know, exposing our students to different cultures around the world to try to bridge that gap from, you know, going up to high school where we don't necessarily maybe have as many offerings in the foreign languages as we once did. This is a way to try to supplement that, but we just felt as though that, again, this would be more beneficial for our students. Now, moving forward, we would love to be able to, you know, explore in the coming years, possibly expanding our foreign language program if possible, but again, we felt as though that offering health education would be more beneficial. So we have posted for anticipated openings for health teachers, and we're getting, you know, a really decent response. So our hope is that we'll have health teachers in place relatively soon, and we'll be able to start developing health curriculum over the summer, and looking at resources and getting those in place for the fall. Our hope is, obviously, you know, going into next year, we'll continue to make sure that we're offering as much equitable Unified Arts as possible. It wasn't, you know, a case of we didn't want to offer music at Grade 8 or art at Grade 7, it's just the way the scheduling and staffing fell, we just weren't able to, you know, offer those equitably, I keep saying unify, but offer those equitably. So we'll continue to look at that, but for the most part, I really have to say, from where we started the school year to where we are now, you know, it's quite impressive, and I have to thank Mr. Kaliff, Ms. Kirk, and Ms. Charette for being willing to change some of their programming that they have in their buildings. Certainly is something that Mr. Swenson and I felt strongly about, but we were really deferring to them as the principals of those buildings, but they did agree, so we are very excited about that. And, Mr. Swenson, would you like me to also wait until Mr. Gelfi explains our potential support person, or would you like me to kind of give a briefing on that now?
I think we could talk a little bit about position, and then if...
Can I just ask you one question about the health?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. I know you haven't done the curriculum, but how much time do you expect, is it one class a week, two? I'm just curious, for the sixth and eighth grade.
It'll be one class per week, again, because it's offered on a trimester basis, it wouldn't necessarily be for a full year, but yes, it'll be one class.
It's considered like a special type?
Yes, it'll be exactly like a special.
Okay, thank you.
It's on a trimester, it'll most likely be every day for 60 days.
Okay, it's considered a special type?
Yes, correct.
Okay, perfect.
It's taking the, again, in lieu of World Cultures, it'll just take that. So, it'll be a trimester basis for 60 days, on a trimester basis, and on a semester basis at BMS, only because they have two teams, it'll be a half-year. So, we're going to try to work on that piece next year, too, to make the offerings equitable in terms of time on learning as well. So, I will say, too, we also talked about health in the seventh grade, which they are going to be exposed to health in the seventh grade. Phys ed folks will pick up that probably in the winter months, when gym space becomes a little bit more tricky and difficult, they'll take on some of, which they currently do.
They currently do that now, and even down into the fifth-grade level, they're...
So we'll have a nice program for that six through eight population, with a lot of the at-risk behaviors, issues that we're seeing in some of the social-emotional pieces as well. I'll defer to Madam Chair, if we'd like to talk about a new position, too, that we have been, and then maybe we could take that out of order with Mr. Gelfi.
Sure. So, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, we discussed the other night at Budget Subcommittee, the potential of bringing on a curriculum position to support the teaching and learning that is going on in the district. It is a position that we advocated for in our Student Success Plan and Mr. Swenson's initial preliminary budget, and we feel as though that now that the dust has settled somewhat, and we have our approved budgets from Bridgewater and Rainham, we would be able to go forward and support this position. This particular position really would be, although it would be a district-wide position, would really be a support and resource for our classroom teachers, really, you know, any teacher of students. This particular person will not only, you know, help to make sure our curriculum is aligned with the state frameworks and across the district, but also going in and making sure that the teachers, in supporting with the teachers, to use instructional best practices. We really view this person as more of a coach, and more of a, you know, implementing more of a coaching model, where, you know, they may particularly go to a, at the middle school, maybe they'll go to a content meeting, or at the elementary level, they may go to a staff meeting and talk about a certain instructional practice, or maybe one of the instructional standards in the state framework, and then they would go in and follow up with the classroom teachers in the classroom, so they possibly might model a lesson for the classroom teachers and/or students, and they would, you know, follow up support. You know, we really, thankfully, with your support, have invested a lot of dollars into our resources over the last few years with our Wonders Reading Program, and certainly our math curriculum and other curriculum areas. We don't have any support people to follow up on that. So, as I explained the other night, but just for all the members of the audience, you know, we typically bring in professional development from these companies, from these textbook companies. It usually happens in August, potentially maybe during the school year, but that's it, then teachers are left to their own device. And certainly, our teachers are very competent and, you know, are skilled and manage, but questions do come up, or they're not necessarily 100% comfortable with, you know, say our Wonders program has an online portion. We didn't really spend a lot of time on that online portion during professional development, just because we were trying to squeeze so much in. Who's there to support that? You know, many of our new teachers coming out of school, although they're phenomenal, you know, they need some coaching and modeling, and we just feel as though this would be a great resource for our teachers in our district and ultimately our students, because at the end of the day, those are the ones that are really going to benefit from this.
As part of our school committee duties, we are required to approve a creation of a new position, so that's why we're here tonight. And I believe, Mr. Gelfi, it was a unanimous approval at the Budget Subcommittee. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the creation of a Coordinator of Teaching and Learning Grades Pre-K through 12 position? Motion by Mr. Gelfi, second by Mrs. Holbrook. Any discussion, any questions from the committee? Hearing that, or I'm sorry?
I just wanted to add, I'm sorry, just to add a little to the narrative here, that we're looking at this through operational funds, but we're also looking at this to be supplemented by our grants, Title I, Title II, and possibly some special ed monies as well. So it wouldn't be a full operational impact. We do have some monies in those grants that could go into a salary line, just to let folks know that, but we'll have to first and foremost look at what those grants are over the summer, so we don't really have a number. We can kind of tell by trends in years past what we'll probably be estimating to get, but we won't really know the true number in terms of how that amount would be supplemented by the grants until we get those actual figures, which usually comes, Mr. Powers, July, end of July, early August, so...
And by then, you'll have finalized the job description.
Mr. Powers?
We have a draft job description. I think maybe you might have seen that or have a copy. So I think there's some tweaking, but for, you know, first go-around, I think it encompasses everything that we're hoping that this particular person can take on. And certainly, you know, we can modify job responsibilities as we go, if we feel as though this person has too much on his or her plate, or maybe not enough, but...
Okay, very good. So there's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support, I appreciate it.
Yes.
All right. And we're going to move on now to our Administrative and School Committee reports, and we have a Budget Subcommittee update. Mr. Gelfi.
Thank you. So, Budget Subcommittee meeting was held on June 10th, 2019. The meeting was called to order at 5:45 PM. Following committee members were present, myself, Dr. Primandowski, and Mrs. Holbrook, and Mr. Dolan was not able to make it. Also present, Mr. Swenson, Mr. Sito, Mr. Powers, Mr. Schatz, Schatz, I'm sorry, Schatz?
Schatz.
Mrs. Dougal, and there were two members in the audience. FY '20 Budget Discussion. Mr. Swenson began the discussion by announcing Bridgewater has finalized their budget, therefore no further budget approval votes were necessary. Three new positions will be added on each side of the district, two classroom teachers and adjustment counselor. The Health Insurance Opt-Out Program negotiated into the current contract by the Negotiation Subcommittee is beginning to pay dividends. Approximately 20 staff have opted out of the district's insurance plan, saving the district $440,000, and after the payout of the stipend, it comes to a net of $380,000. And Mr. ... And Mr. Powers updated the Budget Subcommittee on some changes in the curriculum and staffing. Mr. Macedo provided a copy of the FY19 budget report that outlined each area. The Director of Business Services noted the last official warrant, including lump sum payments, will go out on June 17th with a cleanup warrant on June 30th. He cautioned that the final closeout numbers will be very tight. Facilities request, the superintendent asked for consideration of the purchase of a new lawnmower. The mower had been in the original budget but was removed due to the budget reductions. And ultimately, unfortunately, the older lawnmower finally died. So after discussions, it was agreed that the district would wait until FY20 budget cycle before making any new purchases.
Just for that lawnmower.
Declaration of surplus, Mr. Schatz requested the disposal of fifty-five out-of-date toner cartridges. We may have a buyer for them, hopefully. Otherwise, they'll be recycled, and that's a motion.
All right.
So approve the sale of fifty-five toner cartridges or recycle the cartridges if a buyer cannot be found.
Motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion, any comment?
They're obsolete. Hopefully, we'll be able to find a buyer.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you.
The Excel program fee increase, Mr. Swenson proposed a fee increase of $50 for a tuition of $350 to offset the rising costs associated with running the Excel program. The Budget Subcommittee membership felt that any student already enrolled in the program will continue to pay the current tuition rate of $300 until graduation. The group discussed a proposal settling on following motion to increase, so the motion is to increasing Excel program tuition fee to $350 for all new incoming students.
Motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mr. Marrera. Mr. Swenson, any comment?
Yes, again, meeting with the Excel board a few weeks back, Mr. Cosconi, who's doing a wonderful job as the new coordinator of Excel, had mentioned that a fee increase might help offset the costs of the increased costs and expenditures over the course of the last few school years. I do agree, and I appreciate the Subcommittee's view that folks that are already involved in the program are grandfathered in at the original rate, so this would just only impact those who are newcomers to the program.
Very good. Any other questions from the committee? Hearing none. Motion's are made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
And last but not least, the Budget Subcommittee held a brief discussion on the reduction of bus routes due to the elimination of the pay-to-ride program, and received an update on the supplemental before and after care program on the Rainham side of the district. Meeting was called to adjourn at 7:09 PM.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gelfe. All right. And we're going to move on to our safety and security update. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Wednesday, May 29th, 2019, at approximately 8:15 AM, the Bridgewater Police Department responded to the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School to support School Resource Officer Kevin Kearns after receiving a 911 call reporting that students were evacuating the building. Around the same time, police learned that a fire alarm had been pulled inside of the school. Upon arrival, officers made sure that the school was fully evacuated and secured, and then began their investigation. Out of an abundance of caution, two K-9 officers responded to the scene and did a scene search of the building. No weapons or dangerous items were located within the search. A phone call and email message was sent out by myself to all of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District families district-wide, notifying them of the situation. After it was determined that there was no credible threat, students and staff were allowed back into the building at approximately 9 AM. Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School continued on with the day, its normal operations. However, Officer Kearns and school officials remained on site. The Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School counseling staff was made available to students who chose to utilize these services as means of assisting them in processing this situation. I realize that some concerns have been raised throughout the community regarding the handling of the situation. I would like to once again state that I stand behind and support the decision of the teacher that acted. The Alice program that we began to implement district-wide two years ago is all about taking action. That is what this individual did at the time, based upon the information and resources at his or her disposal. It is now up to us internally to assess the situation, reexamine our protocols, and see if there's any better strategies to support and supports moving forward. We have already begun to do so through our debriefing sessions with safety officials, faculty, staff, students, and parents. As a result, the district has begun to develop strategies to better mass inform students and employees of emergency situations and communicate with students, parents, and employees during post-evacuation phases. These ideas will continue to be examined during our district's quarterly safety and security meetings, the next one, which is scheduled for this Friday, June 14th, 2019. Safety and school officials conducted debriefing sessions with all grades nine through eleven Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School students and grade eight BMS students throughout the week of Monday, June 3rd, and through Friday, June 7th. Students were commended for their response to the situation, encouraged to reach out to school counselors or other adults within the district or at home should they feel additional supports or services were required. The students will also ensure that safety is always the number one priority within the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District, and that we continuously assess and approve our safety and security protocols and procedures. In closing, I would like to commend our local safety officials for their swift response to this situation at the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School on Wednesday, May 29th. We are incredibly appreciative of the wonderful partnership we have forged with all of the departments on both sides of the district. Thank you so much for all your efforts in keeping our students, faculty, staff safe each and every day. So it was an unfortunate situation, however, it was as close to a real-life situation with luckily no injuries that we're going to have. It allowed us, like everything else, as a learning opportunity to identify areas of concern. As I just stated, we've already talked about those areas of concerns and new strategies that we could implement, and we'll discuss some of those Friday at our safety and security meeting. One thing I would just say to parents who may be watching at home is that, as a parent myself, as I say this all the time, I get it, you know, we're concerned about our children when they're at school and that when they're under someone else's care. Situations such as this, when they occur, sometimes your first impulse as a mom or a papa bear is to show up on site. And looking at this through the debrief, we realized, and we, in the police and safety officials, and Mrs. Gormly, and some folks from Central Office, were right on point that day preventing parents from actually coming onto the campus. Now, we understand that parents would want to be on campus to assure that their children are safe, however, when that happens, it could create a real congested area, very confined spaces. And if for whatever reason we ever needed safety equipment or officials to get through, it may make it difficult. So we are looking at different ways and different apps, and Mr. Powers and I met with our database manager and representative from Power School on Friday about some app-based ideas to better inform parents when these situations are happening, just to kind of give them a sense of what's going on without giving them the full details of the situation, but then to encourage them again, not to come on site, only because we don't want it to interfere with operations. And that's solely what it's about. It's not that we don't feel as though they have a right to see if their children are okay, we just want to make sure when those situations are happening, that our safety officials have a clear path throughout our campuses and sites without an added congestion with other vehicles coming on site. So there are things that we're looking to do through our phone systems and whatnot to help better notify. I will say this, in looking through what we're looking at now through the assessment of this, we would not want the practice moving forward being the pulling of fire alarms. We want to figure out a way again to better mass notify, and that's something that we have some ideas about, and we will be discussing on Friday.
Could you just very briefly, for those who don't know, who is on the Safety Committee?
Yes. So the Safety Committee, we have a liaison from the school committee, which is Mr. Marrera, and he has a very vast background in safety, in military, and whole name is security. So he's a great asset to that committee. It's myself, the central administration team, we have our building-based admin who are part of that. We also have our nurse leader, who is Marie Fahy, our Director of Food Services, Eric Delisle's part of that, Mary Bogel, who's our Supervisor of Attendance. We invite in representatives from Lucini Bus Lines. And then it's our Chiefs of Police and Fire on both sides of the district, along with their seconds in command. So it's a really, it's a large group, but it's a lot, a lot of real rich dialogue comes from that and ideas come from that. And one thing, like little things that we're going to be looking at next year, you know, through that committee, we've come up with ideas to have better pedestrian traps, to allow less accessibility to our buildings, or an extra level of defense in all of our buildings. In walking and assessing the buildings last summer with Mr. Marrera, he talks about, it's about minimizing the high risk to medium or low. There are obviously, unfortunately, no 100% in this world that we live in, however, we can minimize risk, and that's what we've done. Next year, we're going to look to put in what are called lobby guards, which are machines at each building. When a visitor comes in, they insert their license, it kind of gives a printout, a quick reading of their query report. So at that point, if we feel as though that's someone that we do not want to enter our physical plant, it will give us that information pretty readily. And they're short money. It's not, it's not a lot of money for those types of products. So those are all types of things that come from that safety and security. Another thing is, and we'll be talking on Friday, accessibility of our cameras in all of our buildings to the police departments and things along those lines. So it's a great committee. It was started by Dr. Forbes a few years ago. We've continued on with that. And again, we meet quarterly, so this will be our last meeting of the year, and a lot of good information and revision of our protocols. And actually, you know, even the Alice program, ideas of Alice came out from that committee. So I do appreciate all those folks that do serve on that committee and keep our students safe.
Did anyone on the committee have any questions? Mr. Swenson?
I just had to point a clarification. Those lobby guards, where are they going to be? Just at the high school or all?
All schools, all schools. Yeah, we're going to put them at all schools. And I think we'll bring them to the Budget Sub, but I think they're under $5,000 apiece, so, you know, it's not...
Is anybody using them that we know?
Yes. In fact, Mr. Powers and I, I think last year went to a meeting at Taunton High School, and we went, we went in.
Thank you. Yes, Taunton High School, East Bridgewater High School, or East Bridgewater Public Schools, Taunton Public Schools, Waymouth Public Schools, Brockton Public Schools, those are just a few that I've experienced myself. And it really just, it prints out, every system is a little bit different, but you scan your, they take your ID, they run it through a machine, it's sometimes tied to some type of database. It could be an internal database, it could be a, you know, searchable database, and from there, they print you out an ID as your picture, so you can, you know, anybody that sees you will associate a name, it just usually says visitor. Some are different, some expire at the end of the day where they turn a different color. Some are just dated so that they know, you know, that you're a visitor there that particular day. So they're pretty unique and pretty, pretty effective.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Schatz has been researching those for us, to find the most efficient and economical...
Very good. We'd like...
Lobby guards out there, so thank you.
Very good. Anyone else have any questions? Very good, thank you.
Do you identify the student that goes with the parent if it's an adult, you know, parent knocking at the door?
That I don't know. I'm not sure if that information, Mr. Powers or Mr. Schatz?
I do know some of those systems, because we necessarily haven't decided on one. I know some of those systems, you're able to create internal flags. So for example, if you had a custody issue with a particular child and the non-custodial parent shows up, it could be flagged in the system when they scan that. But that would be something internally, you know, we would have to input. But again, that might not be a function of the system we go with, but we certainly would look to go with a system that has those type of functions.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to the Mitchell School Building Project update. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the month of June, the Bridgewater School Building Committee planned two public forums pertaining to the tentative George H. Mitchell Elementary School Building Project. The first took place on Thursday, June 6th, 2019, in the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School library at 7:30 PM. This was an interactive workshop similar to the one that we conducted in May at the Senior Center in Bridgewater. The second one will take place tomorrow evening, Thursday, June 13th, 2019, in the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School Lecture Hall here at 7:00 PM. And this is more of an informational presentation and not as interactive as the last two workshops have been. Free childcare was and will be provided by volunteers and staff and parents in the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School cafeteria for parents and guardians who attend these evening events. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank those wonderful volunteers for their time and efforts regarding the providing of these services. We'd also like to thank all of the outstanding community members who have attended the interactive workshops, and hopefully will be attending tomorrow's informational presentation. Please know that your attendance and participation and feedback are greatly appreciated and can help us in refining the George H. Mitchell Elementary School schematic design. There are two very important school building committee meetings in the upcoming weeks. The first will take place on Monday, June 17th, in the Town Council Chambers of the Academic Academy Building in Bridgewater, Mass. at 6:30 PM. At this meeting, the members of the School Building Committee will be thoroughly reviewing and discussing the construction estimations that have been developed by the cost estimators through our owner's project management firm, Dataless Project Incorporated. The second school building committee meeting will take place on Monday, July 8th, 2019. This meeting will be held again in the Town Council Chambers of the Academy Building in Bridgewater at 6:30 PM. The purpose of this meeting will be to thoroughly examine and vote upon the George H. Mitchell Elementary School schematic design that will be submitted to the MSBA for their approval at their Wednesday, August 28th, 2019 Board Meeting. If the schematic design is ratified by the MSBA Board in August, the Bridgewater Town Council will then vote to have this as a ballot question and a special town election sometime in October of 2019. Just a reminder that all school building committee meetings are open meetings and that community members are encouraged to attend and provide feedback and input. As always, additional George H. Mitchell Elementary School project and MSBA information updates can be found at www.bridgewater-schoolproject.com.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Swenson? All right, very good. We're going to move on to a policy Subcommittee report. Mrs. Holbrook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Policy IJNDD website and social media will be reviewed by the Policy Committee in July, and a first reading of the updated policy will be submitted to the Full School Committee on July 24th. The required second reading and vote of approval will be on August 21st. Once approved, a reference to the policy will be added to the student and staff handbooks. That concludes my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. And we already did our personnel report, our update, so we're going to move on to new business. And it looks like we would like a vote to approve the 2019-2020 bus routes.
Still moved.
Did you need to, so they've been down, they've been uploaded into the Google Drive if anyone actually wanted to look at them all, they are there. So we have a motion to approve the bus route. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gelfe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention that information is going to be going out to parents via email on June 21st. That'll give them the information about where their bus stops are, what times to be at the bus stop. And we were able to reduce two tiers, not buses, because our buses run on two-tier or three-tier. So on some of the three-tier buses at Mitchell, we were able to reduce down to two. We put Bus Two in with Bus One, and Bus Nine in with Bus Fourteen, and that's due to pay-to-ride reduction of those students, so we were able to combine those.
Very good. All right, thank you. Just a quick, I just want to go quickly back to policy. I'm sorry, Mrs. Holbrook, we didn't, did we need to mention the McCann event? I'm sorry, Mrs. Holbert, we didn't, we need to mention the McKinney Vento, and we did not.
I believe that's going to be under new business. Is that correct, Mrs. McDougal? I can mention it now?
Yeah.
Okay. I would be happy. Okay. Okay, so I will mention it then, Madam Chair. Thank you. The policy subcommittee will also review substantive changes to policy JFABD, which is the McKinley, McKinney Vento, homeless education policy, to align the policy with changes in state and federal laws. A first and second reading of the policy will be in July and August respectfully, respectively, and the policy implemented in the fall of 2019.
Great. Thank you. All right. And now we're going to move on. We need to approve the 2019 Extended School Year Summer Programming. Mrs. Medeiris.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Uh, our extended school year program is all set to start with your approval for, uh, July 9th through August 9th, uh, where all programming is available. There's a wide variety of programming for children, grades, preschool through age 22. Uh, so the bulk of that programming is July 9th to August 9th with one particular programming extending an additional week through August 16th. Uh, the bulk of the programming, pre-K through grade eight, will be housed at Rainham Middle School. And we extend great appreciation for Charlene and the RMS team for, um, accommodating all that. And we meet and make sure we make the least intrusive settings so custodians can get their work done. Uh, the rest of the programming, which amounts to three classes for children, mostly grades nine through age 22, uh, will be at the high school. And again, we appreciate Angela Watson's accommodation for that. That amounts to probably about three or four classrooms. One classroom uses two rooms. So, um, do you have any questions about our extended school year program? I think everyone's familiar with it.
Well, let's put the motion on the table and then I did have a quick question for you.
Okay.
So, um, I need a motion to approve the 2019 Extended School Year Programming Dates of July 9th through the August 9th.
Well, yeah, with the extension of one program for August 16th.
With the intensive program running July 9th through August 16th. Motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Florence. And I just had a quick question. Is, these are children that have an IEP plan?
Yes. The, a big difference with this program, it's not like a summer school program where, um, students have to go to summer school because they need to do some credit recovery. That's a different program. And usually when I discuss the program, what I like to define is actually these are probably some of our hardest working students throughout the year. These are students who are working really hard to keep up with, um, the academic rigor and working hard to compensate for their, um, various disabilities. And the summer break is just too much of a break to go without any intervention and therefore they qualify for, um, extended school year services. Just because you have an IEP, an individual education program, does not automatically qualify you for participation in this program. This would be, uh, specific to certain criteria that then needs to be supported by the special education team indicating that the break is just too much for that particular child.
Any other questions for Mr. Medeiris? Mr. Swenson?
No, just, um, thank you for all your hard work in putting this program together each year. And I know that it's going to be a success and it really helped those students, uh, hopefully avoid that, uh, regression over the summer months. So thank you, Mrs. Medeiris.
I love it. It's like a reunion. You get to spend a lot of time with a lot of friendly faces. Thank you.
So we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And we are going to move on to talk about changes in the student handbooks. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Mr. Swenson, uh, I'm actually, uh, pleased to report there are no, uh, really significant changes to the pre-K to, or K to 8, uh, handbooks, the elementary and the middle school level. The only thing we really did this past, uh, year was we made some editing updates. Uh, if we found a misspelling that we had, uh, maybe missed in the past, just cleaned those up. Um, little things such as, there was reference about parents providing phone numbers, um, in the event they go out to do grocery shopping. We felt as though that probably wasn't necessary to be in there anymore. Uh, but again, something that had been overlooked. So really, it was really just striking out those, um, unneeded items. Uh, but again, there was really no, uh, a few minor housekeeping things here or there. You know, when we talked about, um, electronic devices, um, just kind of listing out, um, some of those. But again, nothing, uh, substantial that I really would even, um, be able to point out to you. It was more commas and periods and spelling and again, formatting. We tried to reformat it to make it a little bit more user-friendly.
That's what we like. All right. So I need a motion to accept the changes to the elementary, middle school 2019-2020 student handbooks with the acknowledgement that a reference to see policy IJNDD will be added in August. Motion by Mr. Florence, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. Thank you very much. And next up, we'll have any changes to the high school handbook. Mr. Bresnahan.
Superintendent Swenson, School Committee. We just have a couple of changes this year to the handbook. Um, we're going to start with talking about the absence. I'd say that's probably the biggest change. The state of Massachusetts had made some changes to the requirements as far as verification of student absences for next year for reporting. And so they're basically holding all absences accountability. So we, before we had excused absences and unexcused absences because every absence is going to be counted towards the end of the year, towards our report. Well, we decided to change our language. We did some investigation. We talked to some different school systems and what they, the language that they use, they use the word verified. So the absences are actually verified versus excused or unexcused. What that means for the change is that the old language, for example, they would have medical excuses, student had doctor's notes, those things, we would, uh, code it in our system as absence excuse and such. We're going to be looking at our coding, but we're not going to call it absent excuse anymore. There's only certain things that are going to be, uh, verified automatically. So, and our handbook next year, uh, court appearances documented writing from the clerk of courts upon students return to school will not count towards loss or credit. The law in Massachusetts is if you have 14 absences in a school year in a four-year course, and that's not allowed, or if you have seven unexcused absences in a year, in a, in a year, in a half-year course. So right now, students lose credit if they go over 14 absences in a school year or if they go over a seven and a half-year course. So the, these three, which are court appearances, religious holidays, and college visits, uh, up to three for seniors, up to two for juniors, they will not count towards loss or credit. We won't even code it that way. So, uh, those automatically will not be counted towards loss or credit. And the other three that are, that are not even considered absences will not be marked as absences are field trips, assemblies, club counts, or athletic activities. So those won't be considered absences at all. All other absences will go in as verified. So we're going to be coding as absent verified. And what that means is that the end of the year, we, the administration, administrative team, guidance councils, the adjustment councils, we sit down, we go over all documented evidence of absences, whether it's medical, bereavement, whatever it is, and we'll make a decision at that point collectively if they're going to keep credit or lose credit or if they're going to have to do some type of credit recovery. That's how we're going to code that because all absences are going to count towards our report now, if that makes sense. It's a little tricky, but that's, that's what we decided to do. And most systems now don't excuse or, they don't use excuse or unexcuse on absence, they just verify it. So, may I have any questions on that? I'm sure we're going to get a lot of questions on that later. I can promise you. Um, so that's the major change for the absences. Um, on page 55, we decided to expand our breathalyzer language. We looked at it and we saw that, um, if a student was on the influence, if we suspected that they're under the influence, or, uh, we had language in two separate areas, so we kind of combined it to basically state that, um, Bridgewater Rainham High School Administrative Team will reserve the right to breathalyze any Bridgewater Rainham Regional students before allowing entrance to any extracurricular school-related events as well as using the breathalyzer on Bridgewater Rainham Regional students exhibiting signs of having consumed alcohol, which may include having glassy eyes, slurred speech, unsteadiness on their feet, or the emission of alcoholic odor. If student refuses to be breathalyzed, he or she will not be allowed entrance to the school-related event. That means all school-related events. If he or she tests positive for alcohol, he or she will receive an additional opportunity to take the test. Any student that tests positive for alcohol will be subject to all school rules relating to the use or possession of alcohol. We want to make sure the language specifically said Bridgewater Rainham students because we can't, if, if there's a student from another district or outside, we don't have the authority to breathalyze them. If they refuse to take that test, then we don't allow them admission into any school-related event. So we just wanted to beam that up a little bit, make it tighter. Um, page 56, this is another change. So last year, we introduced some language for electronic devices. And we reflected on it, we looked at the progress of that, and we decided that we needed to change it. We needed to make it a little bit more consistent, more concise for the staff and for the students. What we were seeing, um, as we discussed this, is that we saw a really good effort to try to enforce this, but we didn't see the consistency that we wanted. And we saw some issues with that. Students have with the devices in class, they were supposed to be out of sight, but one thing we saw was that the students' cell phones were on the desk sometimes, sometimes in their pockets, sometimes they were turned in, and that, uh, led to some confusion going from class to class. Not to mention that if this, if the phone is on top of the desk, sometimes they'd get texts from parents, which would cause a disruption to the class, or they would use their phone to text their friend to go to the bathroom, meet up with them, and possibly be vaping, or also try to get dismissed too often. So we wanted to have some consistency in this. So what we decided to do is to make it clear for the teachers and staff, um, from changing the language a little bit. I'm going to read that very specific. "These devices can only be used in classes and studies for specific academic reasons tied to the content." We had to change that because, uh, that can be a little blurry. Uh, sometimes students would use those, uh, cell phones for music and such, but they could easily scroll through and change that and tweet or text or Instagram, whatever they wanted to do. So we wanted to make sure that they're not doing that. Uh, we also looked at a study that said that if the phone is in their pocket or on their desk or compared to being put away, the students actually succeed better when the phone is out of sight because they're less anxious. And phones definitely cause more anxiety with students because they're always looking for the next phone call or text, so we wanted to make sure they're out of sight. So one thing we're going to be doing is we're buying holders for every class. Students will put their holders in when they walk into the classroom, except for advisory. Advisory is the one time where you're not going to make them put them up because it's just too complicated, but they have to be put away. And that's actually district policy right now for Bridgewater is they have to be out of sight. The phones will be put up in the classroom as soon as they go in the classroom, they want to have access to that. That means if they go to the bathroom, they're not getting their phone. They'll be put up out of sight. So they're not going to have to worry about that. If the teacher specifically wants them to use that phone for academic content only, they'll say, "Go up and grab your phones out of the holder, use it for this," and then they're going to write back. And so we do allow them to use the phones in the building. They can use them in between classes, they can use them during lunch. Let's also teach them a, a bit of self-responsibility. When you're working, you're working. When you're not, you're not. So we decided to tighten this up a little bit so students go from one class to another. There's no deviation. They know exactly what to expect. It also helps the teachers with clarity, so they know exactly what to expect as well. And because we tried to give warnings the first time this year, it didn't work like we wanted to, we decided to change the consequences a little bit to get that point across. So instead of the warning the first time, they're going to get a 90-minute detention if they violate the, violate this. That's the infraction. And then it goes progressively from that to a Saturday detention, in-school suspension. The fourth time, which we do right now, and I can honestly tell you, I, I have only seen one student this year that has had a fourth infraction because they don't get to use, they don't, they can't have the phone in the building anymore. Um, oftentimes what we'll do is we'll allow them to turn it in in the morning before school because it's a safety issue for a lot of parents. So we, well, we'll, but they can't have it in the building. If they do bring it into the building on the fourth, then they do get an outside suspension, unfortunately. Very few students do that. They usually get it by that point. Um, but we are trying to cut down distractions in our building. We want to focus on teaching and learning. And the social part of that, it's a big part of high school, but there's a time and place for it, and it's not the classroom. That's what we've decided to do collectively. Um, any questions on that? Okay. Search and seizure, uh, we decided to, because we do K-9 searches, we didn't have that language on the handbook. Um, I researched a couple of schools. Abington had this, we basically stole it from them. Um, but we decided if a student is suspected of violating school rules or state law, he or she may be subject to a reasonable search by a school official, including the search of his or her locker and/or personal effects, which may also include their automobile parked on school property. Searches by trained canines may occur throughout the school year, so we want to make sure parents are alerted to that. We have that, now that language is in there. And the only other change which you're aware of is the vaping change, uh, which was already presented to you by, uh, Bridging Lives and the students, is that the first offense now, uh, instead of having a three-day suspension, that becomes a Saturday detention, and there's also an educational component to that, which we'll be working on. And then the second offense goes to a three-day than a five-day. So that was already presented. And that's really our substantive changes for next year for the high school.
All right. So do I have a motion to accept the changes to the 2019-2020 high school yearbook? Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Florence. Any questions?
Yeah, how the kids, how these changes brought attention to the kids?
So great, so that's, we actually talked about that today. So we always talk, we always discuss this, uh, freshman orientation. That's the first thing we do. We also do it during, when we meet with each class. I think the one of the things that we talked about today was really important is to make sure that we get this information out to the parents, uh, so that they're very clear on that as well. Uh, the teachers we meet with, so there shouldn't be an issue with them, but getting it more to the parents, I think is going to be, they, they do, they should be reading this because they have to sign off on the handbook, but I think following, right, I think following up on that is more important because it can be, it can be confusing. I think the attendance is probably going to be the most confusing piece of this is it's just, it's just nature that it's an excuse or unexcuse. So we have to change that language for them.
I have a quick question, and I'm not sure if this is for you, Mr. Bresnahan. Do we have the vaping in the middle school handbook as well, or is it just really in the high school right now?
I'm not sure on that, but I, oh, go ahead.
Dr. Freeman, that was actually something Mr. Swenson and I had discussed. Um, you know, we, we struggled with it. We, we felt as though that, um, you know, it may be appropriate to be consistent because we are seeing that at that level. Um, we did talk about, you know, the, the students now are receiving similar consequences. Uh, whether the language would, you know, imply that it's drug paraphernalia or not, the consequence really is the same, if I'm correct. Um, so we, we decided to maybe possibly hold off on that for another year, um, discuss it more, um, at the middle school level with the, the staff and certainly with you, and kind of make a decision going forward.
So the eighth grade follows the eighth grade handbook even though the Bridgewater Eighth, I, I've assumed that. I just was, okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I did have one question. Uh, the high school handbook, um, breathalyzer. Who, who, um, can ask for the, is it trained staff or is it any staff or?
Yep. So personally, it's just the school administration. Yeah, we, we do that.
Is any of the school administration trained in reasonable suspicion about misuse, reasonable suspicion? I'm looking at it as a legal ramification if somebody says, "Well, are you trained to see?" If somebody says, "Well, are you trained to see that?" I know as a safety officer, I go through reasonable suspicion training for my civilian employer, so I just wanted to throw that into the mix because today's day and age, everybody's looking for an out.
So I can't speak to every administrator that I work with as far as... As far as what training they've gone through, I'm not exactly sure of all the training over the years, but usually as a high school assistant principal, when you're going through your training, when you go through your... After you do your college training, there's a year of mentoring, or there's a year of hands-on training, so you should be training from that. Most teachers also aware of reading that or if you're experienced, but I can speak to myself that I have training in that. We are trained... We also have a lesser degree of reasonable suspicion. So for example, as you probably know, in a school, a school administrator can... We don't need probable cause like a police officer does. We just have to have a certain science. We have the reasonable suspicion that there's either crime committed or that we're going to turn something up. But we should have... We do have training in that. I can speak to myself again. Ms. Beach has been assistant principal, I think, eight years. Ms. Watson, this is her over 20-something years administrator. And Ms. Soria, I believe this is his fourth year. So we have done lots and lots of this.
Do we have other questions? All right. Very good. And I just want to add also that the handbooks with the acknowledgement that a reference to see policy IJNDD will be added in August. So we have a motion and second. All those in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair. Sorry, I had one more. Regarding the electronic devices, so the boxes are cellphone holders, will those be in place for this coming September in every classroom in the high school?
That's our goal. Yes.
Okay. That's starting in September, or has it started this year already?
I know the conversation went out to start purchasing, so the... So I know that conversation went today as far as purchasing those for next year, so we should have those in place.
Okay. And then all the teachers will be on board, I assume, and...
Yeah, yep. And a lot of them already have those in place, a lot of them already use them. I think right now, we have some that are doing that. Right now, our language is they have to be out of sight, and so we... Out of sight was too ambiguous for us. I actually went down and visited a couple of high schools, went down to Monomoy and got there, and I saw every single classroom had that. There was also a question of protection, how they fastened to the wall, and so they actually had a table underneath these holders so that if, for some reason, something happened, they wouldn't just fall until the ground. All right? So they had a table here that was fastened to the wall. Every student had them in there. It was clear plastic. Some students get a little anxious if they can't actually see their phone, so we had clear plastic. So that's our goal right now, is to just have it just like that.
Okay. No, that's good. Just so it's aligned throughout everywhere, so every class that they go to, they'll know.
Yes. Exactly.
Any other questions?